I had a thought. I have a question. I think it's a question that I've been thinking about for a while. I think it's a question that I've been thinking about for a while. I think it's a question that I've been thinking about for a while. I think it's a question that I've been thinking about for a while. I think it's a question that I've been thinking about for a while. I think it's a question that I've been thinking about for a while. I think it's a question that I've been thinking about for a while. I think it's a question that I've been thinking about for a while. I think it's a question that I've been thinking about for a while. I think it's a question that I've been thinking about for a while. I think it's a question that I've been thinking about for a while. I think it's a question that I've been thinking about for a while. I think it's a question that I've been thinking about for a while. I think it's a question that I've been thinking about for a while. I think it's a question that I've been thinking about for a while. I think it's a question that I've been thinking about for a while. I think it's a question that I've been thinking about for a while. I think it's a question that I've been thinking about for a while. I think it's a question that I've been thinking about for a while. I think it's a question that I've been thinking about for a while. I think it's a question that I've been thinking about for a while. I think it's a question that I've been thinking about for a while. I think it's a question that I've been thinking about for a while. I think it's a question that I've been thinking about for a while. I think it's a question that I've been thinking about for a while. I think it's a question that I've been thinking about for a while. I think it's a question that I've been thinking about for a while. I think it's a question that I've been thinking about for a while. I think it's a question that I've been thinking about for a while. I think it's a question that I've been thinking about for a while. I think it's a question that I've been thinking about for a while. I think it's a question that I've been thinking about for a while. I think it's a question that I've been thinking about for a while. I think it's a question that I've been thinking about for a while. I think it's a question that I've been thinking about for a while. I think it's a question that I've been thinking about for a while. I think it's a question that I've been thinking about for a while. I think it's a question that I've been thinking about for a while. I think it's a question that I've been thinking about for a while. I think it's a question that I've been thinking about for a while. Yeah, um, just to give you an order of things done, um, this is where I'm at. I think the whole thing is... I think we do that. 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 I think we do that.
Yeah, six blocks. We get started? Welcome to the October tenth, two thousand and eleven work session. A work session is a more informal meeting setting to update council on business items. No votes will be taken on work session items. Tonight, we have four items on the agenda. Public comment is allowed that is germane to an agenda item. If you wish to speak, you're required to fill out a public comment card and turn it in, turn it into the city clerk of staff. Public comment will be allowed for a total of ten minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of each item. Once the item is called, no other public comment cards will be accepted. So should we have any public comments?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay. I would like to switch the agenda around if that's all right. I want to remember...
Item number three first.
That's all right.
Kathy, we'll go ahead and start with your...
All right, Kathy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The item we'd like to talk about tonight is a proposed overlay. Okay, thanks. This proposed overlay comes from the Crab Apple District. As you remember, in March, a master plan that's up on the board there was developed for the Crab Apple area. The next goal now is to begin work on our overlay zone that will, number one, implement the master plan vision, and secondly, revise the existing two thousand and three current overlay zone. In addition, there are other factors affecting the proposed creation of the overlay. One is that we've had significant developer interest in this area, and secondly, we have a desire to finalize a road alignment for a proposed northway, I'm sorry, northwest bypass road that was part and identified on that master plan. So we have the opportunity through a new overlay zone to get out ahead of development pressure to implement the master plan and finalize an alignment for that bypass road. Now, there are two options that we can consider for overlay zones. One is using the regulatory zoning based on use, and the two thousand and three overlay zone, for instance, is use-based. Most zoning ordinances are use-based. Over the last ten years, there has been a new concept that has really gained a lot of favor, a lot of success, and that is using form-based zones, and, I'm sorry, using a form-based code. What you get with a form-based code is a lot more flexibility. You're able to achieve a sense of place because of it. It talks about using form, height, setback, and the like to create the space as opposed to the old way, regular way that we've been doing zoning, which is basing it on use. So there's a significant difference. Now, in your packet tonight, you did get a discussion on form-based codes. There's also a copy of the PowerPoint presentation that we're about to present to you. I'm not an expert on form-based codes. I've certainly seen very successful examples of it. I've sort of corralled my colleague Caleb Rossico. Caleb has been working on form-based zones for the last ten years. He works with the firm of Tenell, Spengler, and Walsh, a firm that's been very much in the forefront of form-based codes. So he's going to give you essentially, walk you through a one-on-one presentation, if you will, in terms of what form-based codes are, the pros and cons of them as well. And I've got a few slides that I've put into the PowerPoint as well, so we're going to share the PowerPoint. So with that, David, if you've stored it. And so, again, this is an informational presentation on the form-based code way of proceeding. Next option. I have that. That's up to me. You have a clearer map in your packet of this, but essentially, the red area is the Crab Apple character area. The area to... No. For your whole area, I'm sorry. The area down here on the southwest end of the Crab Apple character area, or the southern end of what is identified as the Arnold Mill character area, is an area that we would like to include as we move forward with the consideration of overlay zone. We would like to include it as part of the Crab Apple area. And that is because if you look at the future land use plan, it shows part of this purple area down here as a mixed-use development, but there are no guidelines in terms of how to implement that mixed use as opposed to the Crab Apple, which does have guidelines. So as we move forward, we thought it was important to capture that area as, into consideration with the rest of this area. So the guidelines developed for this could also serve to protect and implement this area down here in terms of sufficient guidelines. The rest of this area, the west segment of this area is, the future land use map calls for meter density residential. So we thought that was also an additional use that could certainly serve to be included in any guidelines that are developed for the Crab Apple area. So that's here for your considerations, you know. So I just did want to define the geographic area that we're looking at. And at this point, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Caleb, who will take you through the main concepts of form-based codes on it.
Thank you, Kathy. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity here to speak to you about form-based codes tonight. As Kathy mentioned, I've had the opportunity in the past ten years to work on about thirty-four of these different districts and areas as divergent as Blythewood, South Carolina, which is a boroughs community, very similar to Milton in a lot of ways, Center City, Atlanta, Hapeville, Duvarville, all over the region. And so I understand very significantly the pros and cons of these types of zoning approaches. As we think about zoning today, there are really fundamentally two approaches to have zoning as being handled in communities. If you think about what Kathy called use-based or conventional zoning, use is the single most important topic. It is the thing that has given the most direction in the code. Usually, you have multiple pages defining the use and one or two pages defining the actual form of development. In addition, there's a big focus on administration, but very little focus on the actual design of the area, which has in some ways resulted in development patterns that look very similar across the nation. That is very different from form-based coding, where the single most important element is the form or design of a building. Use is also part of that discussion, but it is, in fact, secondary to the form issue. And then, of course, there's also a focus on administration, but again, the primary objective is to make sure that development meets the vision of your community, the form of your community, and very importantly, creates that quality of life that is so important to the residents and citizens and business owners of the area. Now, form-based coding, as Kathy mentioned, really focuses on shaping the form of several different things. There's the built environment, meaning the overall configuration of the neighborhood or the town or the district. There is the building, meaning the facade, the materials, a lot of the things that you already actually regulate in the Crab Apple area today and have really had, I would say, very favorable design attributes emerging from it. It also looks very carefully at the placement of buildings on their lots. We're seeing more and more communities that are encouraging rear or side parking, and form-based codes can really enable that kind of development. And then, very importantly, probably the single most important thing about form-based coding is that in an area where you've had a community visioning process, it really allows you to create those community envisioned streets and public spaces. They are really thought of as a centerpiece of the zoning code and not a, not a item to be sort of secondary to the planning process. Now, when people hear about form-based codes, a lot of people think that they must have a lot of drawings. And while that is certainly true, form-based code doesn't have to have drawings. We would obviously want to make sure that Milton does what is legally defensible, and of course, the reason for doing that is drawings are always secondary to text. You must make sure that the text of your ordinance is something that's legally defensible and that the drawings are, in fact, additional to that. In addition, form-based codes are usually key to what we call a regulating plan. And after looking at the Crab Apple visioning process, after reading through the character area descriptions in your comp plan, I think a regulating plan could actually be the single most important thing that comes out of a form-based coding effort for the Crab Apple area. Essentially, what a regulating plan is, is a legal document, almost like a sub-area zoning, zoning map, that takes the vision of the plan and actually codifies it into zoning. It lays out or can lay out, for example, street locations. It can lay out public space locations. It can lay out different types of intensity zones. There may be areas where you want to allow for a bunch of different building types and very broad range of uses, and there may be areas, for example, adjacent to single-family residential where you do, as a city, want to be more restrictive. And form-based codes can, in fact, do that. They're not, they're not a free-for-all that a lot of people have mischaracterized them as. So a regulating plan would be a secondary part of a form-based coding effort. Now, again, after looking at the Crab Apple visioning process, I think that a regulating plan for this area could accomplish a lot of things. It could codify the street framework of the vision, meaning as development comes in, developers could actually be required to build substantially similar street networks to what is envisioned in the plan. At the same time, if the city is looking at particular public transportation investments such as a bypass, these can also be put in there. In addition, a regulating plan is extremely good at identifying those areas of natural features or farmland or agrarian features that you want to preserve and protect. You can actually physically define those in the plan and allocate the density that would otherwise be there to various parts of the district. In addition, your plan calls for a lot of different greenway trails and greenway connections. Those are certainly central to form-based coding. You could have a variety of intensity zones. Again, if you wanted to have greater flexibility in certain areas, you could do that while preserving the edges of budding existing single-family neighborhoods. And then they can also include a lot of different things, depending on what the political will is to put that level of specificity on the code. It's really a very general framework that can really be tailored to meet the need of the community. Now, one of the other things about form-based coding is it does tend to be based on what we call traditional neighborhood development, and you probably all know what this means, but it generally means development that is designed for a human scale, that is focused on walkability and connectivity, that creates extremely high-quality public spaces, that encourages a mix of uses, that provides parking in a way that is secondary to the design experience of the area or the quality of life of the area, promotes a mix of housing types, and very importantly, also incorporates environmental features. And so when you hear about form-based coding, both from me or in the literature I provided, this idea of TND or traditional neighborhood development is very compatible with it. Now, there is a particular kind of form-based code that a lot of communities across the nation are using today, and it is called the SMART code. Essentially, what the SMART code is, is a model code that was created about ten years ago by Delani Plater Zibek and Company, who is a very well-known planning consulting firm. What they have done is they have created this model ordinance that can be adopted and customized by different cities. The significant advantage of this is that there is essentially a template that the city is able to work with and able to customize it. And so by doing this, what you can do is, rather than focusing all your time and money on rewriting an ordinance, they provide a free model code that would then be calibrated through negotiations or discussions with residents, businesses, property owners, and of course, the elected official guiding the process. And in fact, they, when the SMART code was put out as a shareware, if you will, it was emphasized that no community should ever adopt it as written without first going through that customization effort because it is, it is absolutely important to make sure you reflect the place that you're working in. Like any form-based code, the SMART code has a lot of design features. It talks about width and sizes of buildings, block sizes, building types, setbacks, heights, all the things that you would think of when you think of, when you think of zoning. In addition, however, it is also referenced actually as a key implementation tool in the Crab Apple visioning document, which I think makes it such a logical next step as a part of the planning for that area. Now, one of the other things that's very neat about form-based coding, and particularly the SMART code, is I mentioned earlier that you have the ability to have varying degrees of mixed-use development. You may not want areas where it's just a free-for-all. So what the form-based code, SMART code, does is it actually provides guidance based on what is called a rural-to-urban transect. And that sounds very complicated, but essentially, what it means is that mixed use means different things in different parts of your community. For example, you may have areas that the city wants to preserve the residential character. That would be designated, if I can figure out, here we go, that would be designated to T-three suburban zone, and within that zone, actually within the code, the amount of mixed use is very limited. In fact, there's essentially none other than a few permitted home occupation uses. Or you may have an area where you want to provide a much broader range of use. You don't really care whether it's a coffee shop or a pharmacy or an office use, provided it looks a certain way. You would then designate that on the regulating plan as T-five. It's, again, a very specific tool that allows you to create a neighborhood that has a very understood predictable development pattern, which, which we find is more and more important in communities today. At the same time, it provides developer flexibility, which is key. This is a general, very quick overview of some of what these transect zones or T-zones look like. T-three is, as I mentioned, primarily residential zone marked by, very similar to a lot of the development you have surrounding the Crab Apple area today, not necessarily within the proper. T-four is a zone that is a bit more mixed use. This would actually be somewhat analogous to some of the commercial right on, I believe it's Mayfield Road today, where it's pulled up to the street. It has a sort of a residential look, but it does, in fact, have commercial uses in it. And then some communities, this may not be appropriate for Milton, have a much more intense zone where you try to replicate the look and feel of a main street, where the buildings are pulled right to the street. They could be multi-story, but not as much greener as you would have in the T-three or T-four. So these are just some of the base zones that, of course, if Milton were to adopt a SMART code, would need to be really carefully defined to determine what exactly they mean here. And then, of course, one of the other interesting things about the SMART code is it does allow what are called special districts. So if, for example, Milton decides that they do want to do a SMART code for the Crab Apple area, and there may be one site where it just doesn't fit into any of these things, you can, in fact, create what's called a special district that will allow some things that the community wants but may not fit into one of the general categories already defined. So what are the advantages of SMART codes or form-based coding in general? Well, I think the biggest advantage that we've seen in our work in, again, thirty-four different communities across the region in the Southeast is that the SMART code and form-based codes are really your most important tool for codifying the community's vision. After we plan, we always tell our clients, you absolutely have to put in place zoning codes that enable the vision of the plan because otherwise, really, what have you achieved? And this would certainly do that for the Crab Apple plan. In addition, one of the great advantages of it is that form-based coding tends to garner the support of both residents and property owners. Unfortunately, today, in a lot of communities, you tend to see a very bipolar situation where you have residents on one side, developers on another side. By coming up with a form-based code that is very specific about what you want to achieve that creates security because everyone knows what the development is going to look like, you, in fact, are able to bring people together. There's the old joke that a lot of residents think the SMART code is a developer tool, and then a lot of developers think the SMART code is a resident tool to control growth. So I think that's a, that's a testimony to the fact that it really does a very good job at balancing the needs and desires of both, especially when you tie it into a larger community planning vision. In addition, it does, as I mentioned, provide flexibility for developers and predictability. As a former city staff person, I know that there's nothing more annoying than going through a whole rezoning process, approving a site plan for a project, and then Walgreens pulls out and Panera Bread wants to go in there, and you have to go through a whole site plan amendment process just to change the use in a building. If you had a form-based code, that would not be as important. In addition, what you could do is you could create it in such a way that if the market changed and, for example, assisted living became more desirable, you could, in fact, allow those uses to change by right within certain areas. In addition, form-based coding tends to be much simpler than what you have today. I read through the Northwest Fulton overlay, and I think it does a great job at regulating architectural character. I think that if you were to do this code, you would want to incorporate a lot of those building design features into it, but at the same time, I think it could really be simplified, and adopting a SMART code would really simplify the process for everyone. Most focus groups find that people can find it easier to understand than reading through fifty pages of text. And then, very importantly, as a government in a very difficult economic time today, because the SMART code can be adopted using a model, essentially, it's already written, you're getting it for free, you're just using your effort to focus on customizing it and determining what exactly it means, it is a very good use of public funds today. As you probably know, a zoning code from scratch can sometimes run hundreds of thousands of dollars. SMART code can typically be done for about twenty percent of the cost of a true zoning code, so it's much more efficient. Now, again, if the city of Milton were interested in doing that, there would be a lot of various steps that would have to occur before it was determined what exactly the Crab Apple form-based code or Crab Apple SMART code looked like. First and foremost, I would recommend... First and foremost, I would recommend you, as a consultant who does this, to get a very good court review committee or stakeholder group that represents all of the interest in the area. We always encourage our governmental clients to incorporate property owners, residents, businesses, everyone who has a say in the future of this area. In addition to that, we would strongly encourage you to create what is called an equivalency matrix that essentially shows in very simple form the relationship between what is required and permitted today and what is proposed in the code in a nice one-page handout, because really in the end, that's what developers and residents care about the most. You'd have to look very carefully at the process of grandfathering. Whenever you change zoning, you run into the threat of creating non-conformities, and you would want to attempt to minimize that. And then of course, the entire process of creating the regulating plan and determining what exactly of that Crab Apple vision is going to be required, is there anything that may be something you want to allow only under certain conditions, and what those conditions are going to be a part of it. So I'll turn it back over to Kathy to talk a little bit about how some of those ideas might, in addition, be incorporated here in the Crab Apple area.
Thank you. What it shows essentially is a timeline. I wanted to take what Caleb had said in terms of community participation and look to see what it entailed in terms of this timeline in regard to forming a stakeholder committee and working it through the public process as well as the regulatory approval process. And we came up with approximately eight months. And I think that eight-month timeline is good for either the classic type of overlay zoning ordinance or the alternative form-based code ordinance. But I just felt it was a good exercise to do to show you essentially how long it would take to do something like this. And now, in essence, is the end of the presentation. And did you want to show Caleb?
Yeah, I just wanted to show some of these. Does council have time to see some very quick examples? I pulled together just some very, a very few examples of the kind of development that has resulted in form-based coding in the region. This is in Woodstock where TSW did a form-based code for the downtown area several years ago. Oops, there we go. Essentially, the code was very flexible and allowed a variety of different residential types. You've got single-family, you've got townhomes that have a very good urban feel. And in Woodstock, they determined that there was part of their area where they wanted to allow higher density. And so they actually ended up getting some fairly vibrant, almost urban, if you will, development right in proportion of that city, but with a very good street presence. There was a zoning requirement to create a certain amount of public space, and so it's become a very strong focal point for the community. Another one that we did was in the city of Hayville, where they had a plan done and the vision codified it. This is an example of just some of the townhomes that were built there under it. And then in addition, we did a form-based code a couple of years ago in the city of Lawrenceville, where Lawrenceville did an LCI study, and as you would imagine, everything the public wanted was actually a legal into the zoning code. So we amended the code, came up with development forms that were very compatible with the vision, and projects have actually been built under it. And then it can even apply in more urban conditions. And I think that's one of the neat things I want to stress to you today, is the wide variety of environments that we're looking at. Some of them are extremely urban, some are very suburban, some are very rural. This is the kind of development that was built in our form-based code in the city of Atlanta, New England, Florida. Commercial development that, again, would not have happened if that code were not done. And then this is a project that we did not work on, but I think is a great example that I wanted to show you near Orlando called Baldman Park. This is essentially a master plan redevelopment that created a neighborhood center area and a variety of residential uses around it. It incorporated a mix of uses. Here you can see retail, you can see apartments or condos above the retail or offices on the left, you can see townhomes in the back, they could be live-work units, you can see a civic building at the end. So this single shot encompasses a variety of different building types. And it provides a very, very rich pedestrian environment, which was something that was very important to that community. And again, just generally showing that even the chain stores have come in and developed under this and fit into the community vision for the future. And then finally, I put this image in because I think it's a great example of how a form-based code can really reshape the character of the community. I grew up in a small town in Vermont, and this is a part of the city, or part of the town, I should say, that had an old zoning code. And the outlet boom hit, and all these out-of-town developers started coming in and building retail that really didn't match anything at all like the community wanted. And so the development on the right is a freestanding Friendly's, which is a restaurant chain, very, absolutely corporate prototype. It could be anywhere in New England. But this town went in and did a form-based code, and these three buildings that you see on the left are actually brand-new. They've come in, they've matched the historic character of the community, and they've really started, as redevelopment has occurred, to restore the character that was lost. Again, these are actually all retail buildings, but the code is written in such a way that they could be housing, they could be offices, they could be any use, as long as the form is that, which is, if you know Manchester, Vermont, it's, that is perfect Manchester. And so generally speaking, those are some examples of something that I wanted to share with you of how you can create a form-based code, and the results look extremely different depending on what your community is and what your community wants to be. So with that said, we would love to answer any questions that you might have. And if you want to go back, we'd love that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Open up the questions. Bill?
Caleb, you answered my question partially, and the question surrounds national chains. McDonald's comes to mind, where they have a corporate image. What kind of resistance or pushback or acceptance have you gotten from folks like that?
My experience is that the chains will only do it if they have to. And McDonald's is actually extremely good at fitting in when they have to. They've got, I used to see CBS in the first slide, I don't know if you caught that, but that's another example. McDonald's and CBS and most of the national chains, if they want to be in an area, and I will say your area is very hot from a development perspective, if they want to be in an area, they will usually fit in with the image. Now, as a planner, if you were to embark in this effort, I know that there are certain things that you cannot do. For example, we've seen communities that have come in and they've wanted to say, "We don't want any parking," period. And I know as a planner, that doesn't work. And so when I say they'll come in, they'll come in if their business model is something that still works under it. And so I try to, whenever I work with a community, I really try to balance all of the interests, and I try to avoid, you get some communities that completely want to outlaw chains. And I think for me personally, it's more about how it looks and how it fits in than the fact that it's necessarily a chain store. And so I try to bring a very level-headed understanding of the reality of development economics, the reality of the chains, but at the same time, the reality that they're coming into a community that has values, and they need to reflect the values if they want to come in.
More specifically, what's your experience with corporate image signage?
I've not done a lot with signage, quite honestly. I'll be very direct about that. We tend not to, as planners, we tend to focus more on what the building looks like and what the actual sign program is. We have done codes that, for example, outlaw internally eliminated signs. The chains have come in, I've got dozens of examples I can show you where they're either silhouette lit, backlit, or they've got candle illumination on them. But I think there is, as part of any coding process, there's a lot of soul-searching that has to occur, and the community has to determine just how far they want to push it. Milton is not, as you know, a depressed community like some of the other communities I've worked in. So I think you may have the advantage of being able to push a bit further than other communities when it comes to the development character. But I haven't done a lot of sign codes. I, I mean, that would certainly be something that you'd have to look at though. I've done a few, but they tend to be, because of the constitutionality of them, a lot of times what we'll do is we'll just incorporate existing sign codes that may already be in place.
One question for Kathy. Is it possible to get this information, have it up on the website so that people here in the community that would like to get it?
Sure, absolutely, yes.
Because I think it would be good to know if you'd like to see it. And I would feel, read some of it that I quite briefly can have.
Sure.
Yes, thank you, Mary. One, thank you for your presentation. A couple of things Kathy can be more clear. As we look at a potential timeline, whether we're looking at form-based codes or other options for the vision of the Crab Apple, a couple of things that come to mind, I talked about as a group before. One is transfer development rights. And obviously, if we start talking about different densities potentially, I think where we all were was that we were going to look to provide definitions and the mathematics that you go behind to the R's before you start looking at additional densities. So I just would be interested where that falls into our timeline. I think that's a critical piece of this before we jump into the form-based code codifying the densities, because that's going to be a piece of concern. The other, and I think you were mentioning Caleb, as it relates to the matrix of being able to compare and contrast what's currently aright by certain property owners versus what could be potentially proposed, but it seems to me that that would be something that we want to almost pull out and have more at the front end of this process. Because that really ties to what I think where we left it was Lou Oliver when we adopted even the vision, was that there were still a number of things that we needed to reconcile between kind of the picture of the vision, but also what that meant in terms of the densities as an example. Just pull out one example. One of the pods, if you will, talked about senior living, but it talked about multi-story and it talked about different densities, but it really never gave any definition to that. So I think that, you know, when you opened up Kathy, talking about codifying the vision, is I think we were still discussing what that vision really meant. And so before we can implement the vision, I still think that we need some deliverables out of kind of our own, kind of internal group, just to better understand, well, where were we with that vision? Because I think the last time we adopted it, we said that we were adopting it as a kind of 40,000-foot level. So it seems to me that whether we go into form-based or if we look at overlays in a traditional sense, that some of those early requests still need to be kind of part of what we have in our toolbox, if you will, at least for me, before I could really assess whether or not I think a form-based approach is in our best interest and/or a more traditional codification process. So those are just things that come to mind as we go through this process that seem were kind of, is part of the next step.
Yeah. Well, Caleb, maybe join into the discussion if you would, that we've got the vision, but we're not really going to get to the details until we start looking at the overlay. I'm not sure that the vision is going to give us a lot of that stuff upfront. I think as we start to negotiate the overlay and whatever that overlay is, that's when those negotiations, I think, start taking place.
I would suspect that Lou Oliver knows what density he drew the plan at. I mean, I'm a planner, I know you know this when you draw it up. It would be interesting to get that from him. But I think, I think, it's interesting, when we do form-based coding, we always focus on everything else, the look, the feel, the character, and leave the density for end. Because I think by focusing on what we agree on as a community, we get a lot farther than starting with the thing that invariably there may be some disagreement on. So if we were to work with you on this, I would encourage everyone to think about where are the areas of commonality and leave that very difficult discussion of, towards the end. Now, into the issue of TDR, the SMART code actually does have an already-written TDR component built into it. It's, the way the SMART code works is there's this basic framework, and then the different communities adopt what they call modules that essentially plug into it. So if you had an area that you wanted to designate a TDR sending zone or a receiving zone, you can also do that. I'm not sure whether you're referring to within this geographic area or maybe to other parts of the city.
Both. I mean, I think that we've talked about capital, potential, and unit receiving zone, but obviously there's other parts of Milton that would need to be that sending zone. But what we had talked about within our comp plan as well as, as it relates to the vision and process, is that that TDR, and I think in our short-term work plan, it identifies TDRs as kind of the first step.
It's a...
It's at the top of that list.
It's an objective, yes, to be done.
So both. I think we have to have sending zones, but we also have to have receiving zone. And obviously, if we're talking about additional densities in Crab Apple, we're trying to talk about that as a receiving zone, I think it would be sooner or not later, which I think is how it would also match up with our plan. So those are just things I think that separate from tonight are important elements.
Karen?
I guess, what do we really, what do you actually need from us tonight?
Well, let's kind of wait till, or, as all the questions are done, I'll kind of...
Do we have any more questions?
Well, we can just, can I tell you why we brought this presentation forward tonight? Maybe what we're looking for. You know, we've got a picture, at least, whether it's the end picture or, you know, the sort of getting to the end picture, it's a better, it's a better place than we were before we started that process, right? If you then take a planning document and a planning picture, and you go drive over to the area that it was drawn of, you will see that there is an opportunity to try to figure out how we make that picture real. How we make that picture be more than just a thing that collects dust 10 years from now that we didn't quite get to in time. And that's my concern with why we're here as quick as we are, is because there are approved plans that already exist over in this community. So something's, you know, I mentioned to our staff meeting this morning, said something's going to get built. And it's either going to be what exists today that's already approved to be built, or to the extent that we decide that we want that picture to be real, and more than a picture, we're going to have to take some, take the bull by the horns pretty quick and do something. Because if we don't do something quick, that picture will be just a picture for the long term. And that's why we're here quickly. I recognize that this is a bit out of order as to what you might have thought we were going to, we were going to bring here. If we had a field over there with no, you know, if we had a brown field with no approved plans, with building permits issued almost every week for things coming out of the ground, you know, at this point, we've got some landowners over there who have said, you know, City of Milton, Chris, we recognize that there's a plan that exists, but we also recognize that we've made an investment in our property over here, and we have approved plans to start building stuff. You know, I've got it, we've got to figure out where those push and pull points are. You know, you've come to us and said, "Now you want to realign one of our roads that goes through here." You know, how does that make everything work? That's the essence in why we have brought this forward pretty quickly. In the, in the perfect world, this wouldn't feel nearly as rushed. But we really sat down and did that soul-searching as a staff to say, you know, if that's ever going to be real, we got to, we got to take the risk and bring it forward in a hurry. Because, you know, if we don't now start to maybe push some of these things forward simultaneously, I fear that that'll ever be real. And I guess that's why we're here. So I get the point about, yes, transfer development rights is in our short-term work plan, it's on our list of things to do today, or to do this year. Maybe some of these things happen in parallel with each other. I guess now I've said a whole lot of words too where I've got to say, "But I'm not the expert planner at the table." You know, so I rely heavily upon the experts that we've brought here to say, "Chris, we can, we can make that real for you so that in two and a half years, we all can be standing in front of that and it exists." Or we can't. So, you know, that's where I have to then rely back upon them to tell me why there's, why this is a good option or an option. And I guess that's what we're here to say is, we'd like to present this as a way, not necessarily the only way, but it is a way, and it's a fairly timely way of allowing a portion, small portion, in the grand eternal scheme of things, of our total city to maybe take on the character that I think you all want it to take on. So that's where we're...
Does that make sense to you?
That's kind of where, while we're, while we're here as quick as we are, you know, with something that seems as... with something that seems as, as out of the box as it is, it's because the iron's hot right now. And if we let it pass, that's fine, but if we let it pass, Crab Apple's going to be built.
If anybody drives through there now, you see a cookie cutter humps going up left and right, so. And they're, legally, they're able to do that, so. Should we turn it over to Kathy?
I guess what we're looking for is maybe some questions, maybe turn it over to Kathy if, if you'd like us to at least, well, I guess that's what we're here for, is to see if, if, if the council number one shares the urgency that we believe exists, number two would be willing to provide the direction to say, Chris, make that real. You know, we, that timeline could start tomorrow.
I see their urgency in that. I'd like to make it real. I'd like to hear about, you know, from the rest of the council what their thoughts are. Alan, I know you were...
If you get technical on me, I got to point this way. If you stay broad-based on me, I can...
Well, I get it. I had heard Mr. Orkin talking about this, when we were talking about the Crab Apple visioning process. I don't know that it was called smart code at the time, but it was basically, as I interpreted on the phone that meeting, was that this code would, and this way of redoing our zoning ordinance for that particular area would be, would really dictate the look and feel and character of the area rather than the use of it. And the market would dictate the use of it. I, I am, you know, I, I think that if there isn't any area of town where this would work in terms of looking at our vision and what we want for Crab Apple, and the money that we currently have, and all that we want done to the area in terms of traffic and the different uses in the area, and the look and feel and character of the area, potentially a city hall in that area, I think that this would be the way to go to be able to do that. I would agree with Councilmember Zonner Bailey, though, that I do believe we need to, at least at the same time, look at transfer development rights, so that it's a win-win for the whole city and not just one part of the city. So I'm in favor of moving forward, basically.
I'm in favor of moving forward this direction, too. I think we've got property owners, developers that are, that are obviously interested in this area being successful, and they want to work with us to make it successful. And I think it seems like a lot of the stars are aligning for us now to try to push something forward and make it a reality, so.
Well, I think this is the best option I've seen so far. I can't imagine a better one, given the examples, the real examples that are out there. I think an area that has that congruity, I guess, a plan where everything seems to come together is attractive. It's not only attractive to the development community, it's attractive to the residents of the area, too. I guess one question, maybe it's a loaded question, if this is indeed the way that we're going to proceed, and if we're four months down the road and it looks like this thing's really yelling, and the economy starts to turn around, that's really wishful thinking. But I'm wondering if people couldn't get on board at that time, maybe two, four, six months down the road, knowing that it's, it's going to be set in place, and just start developing in accordance with those codes.
Well, I think that we would certainly involve potential developers and be representative on the stakeholder committee, and we would certainly have meetings with them to let them know. And I think that's why the timeline is very important to a developer. The developer knows that there's a timeline by which something's going to happen. It's much easier to obtain their buy-in. So we would certainly do this, because we don't want to lose the opportunity of developing this. And, you know, once it's lost, you've got it for 50 years. And that's why it's just so important to move forward on this, but to involve them as well. And I think we would certainly have those meetings and certainly bring them and make them part of the process.
No doubt. I think some of those that are moving forward right now, you know, would be willing to work with us if there was a point, if there's a plan there and they know that there's a timeline, rather than if we just keep dragging it on, then they're just going to keep moving forward. Karen, are you...
Actually, I think we've got a very unique opportunity, simply because of the economic environment that we've had for the last four or five years. There's been almost very little development in that area, so I believe we have a unique opportunity. I would like to see it go forward as quickly as possible. I think we could probably get it done back to the eight months, because I think you will get the residential and development community and everybody else that we have out there and involved as quickly as possible. This is what was recommended to us by Lou Oliver. This is what, in conversations with Tom Wilson, he felt like we needed to go. And I think it's, we need to, we need to make a move as quickly as we possibly can. And hopefully, along the way, like they said, get the development community on board, and if they have to get, with variants in current things now, to get, if they want to get started, we can work with them on that. Let's get going on it, because if, five years from now, we will not have this opportunity. We may not have this opportunity two years from now. It's now or never.
And just really going back on, you know, we're interested in moving forward tonight, and then we can open up questions to more staff.
Julie, can you... I'm definitely in favor of moving forward with the vision. I think that tonight, whether or not it's form-based or whether it should be overlay specific, to be very candid, I think a 10-minute presentation is hardly enough for me, at least, to be able to say, yep, I think form-based planning is exactly the tool that we should use for implementing the vision. I would hope that we would all take more than 10 minutes to evaluate whether or not that's the best approach. Is it one of the approaches that I think we should consider? Absolutely. But I do think that sometimes the detail is going to be pretty critical, including detail around how would form-based planning relate to that which is currently on the ground, that which is already approved, and that which is visioned, obviously by, you know, the drawing. So I'm going to go back and mention that I do still believe that as part of that timeline, it would be critical for us to evaluate transfer development rights. Because I think that we all would agree that when we looked at this visioning process, it contemplated some additional densities beyond what's currently on the ground. And I think we've also said, and we say it every time, and I think that the missed opportunity would be, not only a missed opportunity to implement the vision, but also the opportunity to finally have transfer development rights in place within the City of Milton.
I think so.
And so I think that we would be remiss if we talked about a missed opportunity. We would have a missed opportunity if we didn't integrate transfer development rights as a part of this process. I think to grant additional density without considering that would be the same mistake that got made the first time the property master plan was put in place. There should have been TDRs at that time. It was a missed opportunity. We need to make sure that doesn't happen again. And I think that developers and residents would agree that TDRs can be agreed to that benefit the development community, the residents, and those that will live here 50 years from now. So I would strongly urge us to understand how we can incorporate that in our timeline. The other thing that's just, I guess, a question, as we talk about implementing the plan, I think we still don't know what the "it" is. You know, we're looking at that, and I think we all agree that we like that picture, but I think that as we start to understand what the "it" is, whether it's the uses, whether it's the uses and the density, we all can agree to the picture. I think what we needed to start understanding is, what is that "it"? You know, what is that total geographic area? What does it mean to incorporate the purple area? What is, what's the amount of landmass that that incorporates? How would that be different from incorporating it as part of the 140 master plan versus the private master plan? But those are the details that I think we shouldn't wait six months to talk about. Hopefully, we'll start having that dialogue sooner rather than later. So I am for pursuing the vision and implementing the vision, but I think we have a lot of details that we don't have. And we keep saying that we want those details, but we seem to kind of be skipping over some of the details, and I hope that pretty soon we start to garner what those are.
Okay. I know, Joe's not here, but it sounds like the rest of us are pretty aligned in moving forward. So, Chris, what's your thoughts with, for Kathy, what are next steps to take?
Well, I think that the next step would be to bring an expert on to work, and frankly, it's probably going to be Caleb, to help us with this initiative. To, we've, on the timeline at the bottom, I've made a proposed list of stakeholder members, so we'll be looking for your input for that. And again, we want to be as representative as we can to start this. But clearly, to start to put together that list of community representatives, so we can start working on this, to do all the background survey information that's necessary, to start bringing it forward through the public process, and to certainly respond to some of your concerns. We can co-terrestly start on TDR initiative. We've already started that discussion. It's part of the LCI study for Highway 9. We did include a TDR element in there, so that's moving forward on its own. But the whole issue of TDR, as it relates to Milton, I think is a really important development tool that we really need to get our hands around. And again, it's, you know, conservation subdivisions, TDRs, overlay zones, that they all, anything we can do to get ahead of development. So when development comes, we're ready for it with the tools that we need to create the vision, to create the City of Milton, as you all envisioned. That's really my goal. So I think we're going to be moving sort of quickly with a lot of these things, but I think we have to. So I'll move as fast as you want to move, and so that we get them in place, because it's, we'll just lose that opportunity if we don't.
Well, no, I agree. I'm here all the time, you know, everybody enjoying what Roswell's done and Woodstock, downtown Woodstock, and, you know, I think we do have this opportunity, and if we don't move on it, then we just have, you know, the big neighborhood there, so. So, anything else you want to add, Chris?
No, I think I'm...
I have a quick question, and this is separate from tonight. And you mentioned that there were some things that were currently on the ground that are approved, that are assumed permits of building. If you could separate from tonight, just give us a list of what those are in terms of specific projects that...
It's Wieland and Stoltz. It's Brayburn and, I mean, and that more relies upon the fact that, you know, we're looking at that northwest bypass of the road. That tracks itself right through some living rooms and right through, so I'm not, I'm not referencing anything other than what is residential out there. But the realignment of a road really causes even that residential to be slightly problematic in figuring out, you know, how do those site plans that are already approved, how do those get amended to allow for? You know, putting in, putting in a road and shifting it to a different place, when what you really have on the ground is dirt, is a lot easier to do than when you've got a living room deep so.
And I just wondered, within that context, are there, you know, four or five that are ready to start building in the next month? Or is it just a function of the fact that some of those Wieland homes were approved? I just wondered if we could look at that...
I think Will's ready to build, and I actually think he's, he's picked a different area, just because we've had some pretty good conversations with, he's been open and receptive to the conversation, saying, you know, if you put that townhome in, this, I'm pretty much done.
Right, that we can't move on that road.
Yeah.
If I could just add to that, too, I'm having a discussion with Wieland's representative. They're looking to move forward on another phase at Brayburn. And when the comment comes back to me that of all the neighborhoods in the entire metro area that they are working in, that this is their most successful, their most popular, you know that development pressure is building up. And so that just spurs me to think that we really need to move quickly on that.
It says that Milton's a great place to be.
Exactly, exactly.
We've done a nice job protecting it.
But, you know, the concern I have is, you know, there's very few pockets that residential is, is doing well on now, and we are one.
Right.
But, you know, pretty soon, if it gets built out, all residential, then it's another neighborhood, and we don't have services and the character area and all that that I think we all want, so. We're a good spot, but we've got to move.
And a question along this path, do we have any updates in the library?
Not as, I don't.
No, I don't. They're looking at alternatives right now. A couple pieces of property that they have tried to pursue have not worked out, because the appraisals have not come in anywhere close to what people thought their property was worth, so.
And I know that was the, I think that's where we were even going back a couple of months, and none of that was changed.
They have continued. I actually gave with a, the information from the last Crab Apple meeting, because I said there may be some additional roads that may end up getting built, and if they do, that may give you some additional areas that you can consider putting a library.
And of course, I asked that question in the context of this, just this and the LCI that's going on on Highway 9. If there's anything that we can do to get a better handle on the library, that would be exciting.
That's secret.
Well, Caleb, thank you very much for your time, and Kathy for your presentation.
My pleasure.
It's exciting. And if it's okay with the council, it's okay if we go forward, but I don't know for what.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. It'll give me a chance to go get a little bit more caffeine. So Kathy, you're on.
Kathy, I'm going to go ahead.
Yeah, the mayor's decided to go first.
Go ahead and do that, while we're at it.
Okay, you want me to be able to sign me in?
Sure, come on, yeah, yeah, come on over here.
You keep turning around, so I want to come at you when you speak.
Yeah, so.
I'm a Sylvaner, that's the problem.
I figured, I think there may be folks in the audience here that want to make them wait too much longer.
Are you going to read anything, or should I just...
Okay.
Oh, the city clerk, please, down the next agenda.
RZ 1116.
We're not as formal.
Oh, okay. Not for words. Oh, all right. Okay, well, then let me just start right in. This is a, a request to amend Article 18, the Historic Preservation Commission of the City of Milton zoning ordinance. And just to give you some background, this Article 18 establishing the Historic Preservation Commission was adopted by the city mayor and city council on June 21, 2010. And then subsequent to that, the Historic Preservation Commission was formed. And they had their first official meeting in February of 2011. And soon thereafter, they sent the ordinance establishing the commission to the state Historical Preservation Division for their review and input. Well, lo and behold, the state came back with several comments and proposed changes that they would like to make. And the state did identify these items, and they are reflected on one of the documents with the red, those essentially other state comments. And just to highlight what these changes include, they made reference to the fact that they wanted to remove all references to the H, which is that historic zoning district, because this ordinance does not address land use, for their reason. They wanted more definitions added. They wanted to reduce the size of the Historic Preservation Commission, and they, and as a result, the ex-official members were deleted. They want a removal of all references to historical site of interest. They recommended removal of references to erecting markers at historic sites. They wanted the language strengthened for retaining outside professional help, and they recommended reducing the number of days that the Historic Preservation Commission has to recommend and transmit their decision to the mayor and city council regarding certificates of appropriateness. The HPC did meet and did approve these changes. Then subsequent to that, prior requirements, they did then hold a joint work session with the planning commission. And the planning commission also agreed to these changes. However, the planning commission at their meeting of September 27, 2011, asked that the state conditions be modified in one place, and that was on page nine. There is a section, they're talking about certificates of appropriateness, when it is appropriate for the HPC to act on these or not. And the state had taken out the word "a non-contributing building," in that they just wanted the HPC to act on contributing buildings. And the, the planning commission decided at their meeting on the 27th of September that they wanted to put back in not only contributing buildings, being eligible to receive that certificate of appropriateness, but also non-contributing buildings when the amount of new construction equals or exceeds 25% of the land area or building ground floor area of the property in question. Now, after that meeting and that vote that was taken, it was determined by staff that this was redundant. Because if you read that very same paragraph, if you go down another sentence, it talks about that a certificate of appropriateness for non-contributing building structures, sites, objects, et cetera, shall be considered by the DRB. So there is language already in the ordinance dealing with how to handle non-contributing structures. So by having the, the planning commission put it in for HPC review, when it clearly says that non-contributing structures should be reviewed by the DRB... that non-contributing structures should be reviewed by the DRB, makes it redundant. So we did pass that comment on to the chair of the planning commission. And we do recommend that that modification by the planning commission be deleted by you all in your vote. And we have given you a clean copy of this ordinance that reflects all the changes of the state Historic Planning Division, but deletes the redundancy with that clause that we felt was redundant by the planning commission. And I hope that makes sense.
I have a quick question, sir. Just, obviously, it's important that the non-contributing structures be reviewed. Did the planning commission not realize that the design review board would be reviewing it? Or were they looking for the HPC and the design review board to both somehow be involved, you know?
Robin was there, too. I got the impression that, I don't think they realized that that language was there. And maybe I'm wrong, but...
They realized that line was there. And to be honest, I didn't either because I'm not as familiar with it. And that's why, after further discussions with Angela, who works with it every day, that she pointed that out.
I'm just wondering, the good news is that somebody would be reviewing that. Somebody would be reviewing it that obviously has an interest.
Yes.
Would there be any reason or perhaps an opportunity to maybe just have a footnote that says, you know, and the design review board, of course, could reach out and get any input from the Historic Preservation Committee?
Sure, non-contributing buildings, absolutely, yeah.
Just for non-contributing, at least that way there's a formal process whereby it's not required, but it gives the Historic Preservation Committee the opportunity to provide some input because there could be a non-conforming building that's within a historic district. And I just would hate to not have the HPC's input provided.
Well, I think the good news is that Angela coordinates both the HPC and the DRB.
Correct.
So I think from a staff level that that would just naturally happen and that there would be some...
So there's been only consideration whether or not just making that statement that staff, you know, would ensure that there's that coordination between the HPC and the DRB. To your point, surely don't need it to be redundant, but I think it's important to just capture that somehow.
Okay. We can certainly do that if you'd like.
My only other question is on markers. I think that's odd. Why did the state have a concern with markers being erected?
So that's what a historic society does.
Right, it's a society function. And I think that right now, the HPC is working together to create that society, yes.
Okay, yes.
I think you want something along the lines of Historic Preservation Commissions are there to protect things for the future, to enjoy them, not to mark up where something used to be. That's what a historical society does, so it just means we need one of each.
Yes, right.
Is what that means.
We need thing, I know we've got some members of our audience in the comments. Have a try to track. George?
I didn't turn it apart, but I, because the error in Section 64.2245, it could even correct it. The only thing you mentioned was the language of the charter.
Then it gets to Section, Section on the term of the members of the HPC, the language that got filed up and recommended different language, I just couldn't hear anybody say that this change was...
Yes. And what was it that was changed?
It was an issue with, earlier in the year, we changed the way that the commission was created. And so through the codification, what we had originally was the old version, so we just fixed that to make it consistent with all the other boards and commissions. So that was George's question.
Fair.
I know this removed the H designation from this ordinance itself. Will we still have a historic zoning classification? It just will not be part of this?
Absolutely. And that is moving through the process.
Okay, so we'll be going before the planning commission and all becoming before us for an H?
The H district, yeah.
For the zoning classification.
Correct.
What's the schedule on that?
The schedule is, it's going to the planning commission this month. And so next month, we should see it at a work session and then council in November. So it's just a month behind.
And that would actually allow us to put whatever conditions we want, basically on a property by property basis for anything that is zoned in that...
It does, but there is a limitation for the H district and that whatever, first of all, the building has to be designated as historic first by the HPC. And then the way we have it written currently is that it would need to have, you know, the proven use of it, that's what it would be restricted to, was that previous use. So you couldn't have a building and come in with some other type of use that wasn't historic to that building.
So it can't be made up?
Correct. Now, it's true with the other conditions. I mean, if it's for setbacks and development standards, we can...
We didn't have many historic male car alerts back then, so most likely we'll have them now.
Okay, any other questions? I'll move back to item number one.
Yeah, let's have a quick little discussion tonight on Hopewell House. It's probably not going to be as in-depth of a discussion as I had hoped for. And part of the reason behind that is I have about half of the deliverable that I had hoped on having when I brought this forward for the first time. I followed up, and this is one of those times when you follow up with somebody and say, I need that, I need the deliverable, when can I expect it? And the response was, we're still on track to have it by Friday. I didn't, part of the story I didn't clarify was how much of the deliverable was going to be there by Friday. So I got half of what, I got phase one, I just didn't get phase one and phase two. So as you all, I don't need to take you back to the whole process by which the city has come into possession of the house that we've now affectionately kind of termed the Hopewell House. I don't know what it will be titled long-term. Just to give you a quick snapshot of where we are to this point, that house is stabilized and is not deteriorating any further. As you drive by, the landscape's maintained. So we've gotten it kind of stable in place. We've gone through the process. The first step was to create some as-bills in a CAD program so we could start to put in front of you kind of this program by which you get to say, you know, with some background actually as to what parts of the building were probably built at what point, to try to start to put together a vision for what stays, what goes, what roof characteristics stay, what roof characteristics go. And it's going to be really cool when we get to the point that I can actually do that on a display. That was phase two. The phase one that I have to hand out to you tonight are the as-bills that are created. I don't think you can do a whole lot with them other than to look at them and kind of get a sense of what they say. They're very detailed, very well done. I can also just say that for the purposes of discussion, you probably will anticipate this one to be brought up two or three times over the next several months. So without taking too much of the thunder tonight on this one, I'd like to hand this out. I'd like to anticipate that we'll have the phase two from Mr. Oliver before we meet again at the next work session so that hopefully we can do some of that plug-in and play-in visually. I mean, I really think this is a visual process more than, it doesn't necessarily have to be a visual process. I think it's enhanced if we have the visualness of it to be able to see with the different layers, what stays, what goes, what gets tweaked, what, to get the vision that you all have for how that structure is restored. If anybody wants to add anything, I know Councilmember Lusk has had some ideas as to some potential, even very, very quick uses for the property. If you want to update the council on some of your thoughts tonight, that's fine. If you want to hold it to November, that's fine, too. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I appreciate you exploring some quick uses out there.
Being a member of Mansell House and Alpharetta Historic Society, and there's several members here tonight, I see this basically as an extension, the same functions as the Mansell House. And I think it's be a key destination point or attraction, just like Mansell House is Smith Plantation of Barrington Hall in Roswell. Beyond that, I see it as a repository or an archive for local history, things that have been bantered about. But one question I have, I guess with this presentation, given the current layout of it, can we determine what codes would apply to a historic structure like this and what levels of occupancy that we could expect would be allowable in this, kind of concurrent with this whole discussion? The ultimate floor plan or configuration, the whole thing, may deviate a little bit from what it is now, but maybe just a cursory review of what we might have to do to it to make it accessible or adaptable for assembly use.
All right, an assembly use, okay. We can certainly do that.
Thank you. It's on my head.
Cool. Y'all sleep on these, digest these, take a look at them, you're going to see a good bit of them here in the next, probably over the course of the next several months. But just know that the biggest issue that we had with that was to not let it deteriorate any further. Frankly, I'll say it, I was going to, told the mayor earlier, this has always been a top priority until I've walked in and had a different top priority for the day. So it actually works out okay that I didn't get the second, not that I was trying not to get the second half of the deliverable. I was really hoping to have it, but it's going to work out okay for us to talk about this next month with the other stuff we've got going on right now, so.
Chris?
Yes, ma'am.
Just a final thought, especially since we have some of our Historic Preservation Committee members, I would hope that we are also enlisting, you know, their ideas and discussions, discussions about the Hopewell House and different things that they would envision being able to utilize it for. Obviously, as Councilmember Lusk just mentioned, I think several of us have talked about it as, as it relates to the Mansell House, but also as a repository for historical areas that we just mentioned. But also in your meetings, I know that you guys have had some discussion points. And I just hope that through this process, we engage that group and entity as well so we get that phase two that they have a chance to look in common as part of our process.
Absolutely. I would love the input. I haven't asked for the input yet, partly because our process has been just to get held in place what we acquired. But absolutely, yeah, to each of the people that are here that represent that group, absolutely.
Both from the HPC and then also the DRB, because they're both big to the county.
Because I know about this much, about what they know about this much, so.
But just thank you for that.
Thanks.
Chris? Next, we'll move to Mr. Gerard on the Charter Commission.
Mayor, this won't take long. If you look at the packet I handed out, the council, not the one in your packet, the one I handed out, it's got some updates to it. Flip to the third page of what I handed out, everybody can find that. You will see on that back page, an excerpt from the Milton Charter, Section 7.1.8, to be precise. This reads that the first regularly scheduled city council meeting, five years after the inception of the City of Milton, the mayor and city council shall call for a Charter Commission, plus you, to review the city's experience and recommend to the general assembly any changes to the city charter. Members of the Charter Commission shall be appointed as follows, one by the mayor, one by the city council as a body, and one by each member of the general House of Representatives, excuse me, Georgia House of Representatives and Senate, whose district lies wholly or partially within corporate boundaries of the city. So with that as our framework, we have a commission to create. And this is supposed to be done five years after the inception at the first regular meeting, which by my calendar, if Milton was created on December 1st of 2006, then I believe that December 5th of 2011 is the meeting at which you need to adopt.
Didn't we meet at midnight that first night? No, I'm not joking. I thought we did.
We did.
We met at midnight on December 1st.
We luckily do not have to meet at midnight.
That's good, but I just went with December 1st versus December 12th.
Because now we have a conflicting ordinance, so we can't do that.
Anyway, I wouldn't be facetious. We did meet at midnight.
I think, I think...
Mrs. says we have to meet five years afterwards.
Yeah, the next, the next one.
After that.
So that's the bottom line. Let me tell you what I've put together. We can focus on the whereas's if you want to in the actual resolution, but I'd ask that we don't, just get into the nuts and bolts of it. I don't mean to say that's just lawyer's speak, but really, it's after the now, therefore, that I want to focus on it. If we adopt this, like I say, we need to adopt it on December 5th. Number one, you would be recommended or directing that a Charter Commission be established to review the city's experience and recommend to the general assembly any changes to the city charter. That's language right out of our charter, which is why I flip that to the city's experience and things of that nature. That's right out of the charter. We want to conform to the language of the charter as best we can. Number two, that the newly formed Charter Commission shall have its introductory meeting , you know, earlier than January 15, 2012. I want to explain why, and you'll understand why, we set to almost have like a 45-day delay before it actually has its first meeting. Go to paragraph three, that the city council for Milton shall, at the first regular meeting in January, consider and approve a detailed list of those Milton Charter areas and issues for which it would request the Charter Commission specifically reviewed. No one knows better what needs to be tweaked with respect to the Charter of Milton than you did, working, of course, along with Chris and staff. And so I think that it would be appropriate if the council, after this entity is created, you all take the time to put together a list of areas you would like them to focus on. Otherwise, you'll have this entity sort of created and landed in its job and said, okay, now what's not working? The reality is, you may know what's not working. Chris knows what's not working, or the staff know what's not working. So, and I'm not suggesting that we just start thinking about this on December 5th. We can be leading up to this the whole, you know, several months we've got. Chris thankfully is acting so far ahead that we've got plenty of time to think about it. But we will have a kind of a nice chronology once we create this entity on December 5th. My thought would be, and let's go to paragraph four to, it's a nice segue. My thought would be that the draft list of the Milton Charter areas and issues will be assembled by staff in conjunction with Chris's office and placed on the December 12th work session. So at a work session in December 12th, we'll all be having a discussion about the charter, getting ready for placing of a resolution setting forth maybe what the charter issues are on the first meeting in January. Once you've adopted that, then me or so to your Chris or somebody will walk that over to this new Charter Commission you offered and say, here's what we'd like you all to look at. Now, does that mean that's what they, that's all they can look at? No. But I think the reality is, if they get a list of issues by you, they're going to spend the bulk of their time looking at those issues. The rest of the resolution is fairly cut and dried. Number five just says that all the members have to be residents of the City of Milton. Number six, on December 5th, the mayor would make their appointment. I would plug that into this information. It would be part of the resolution. On the 7th, hopefully we'll have consensus. If not, when you're making the motion to adopt this resolution, the council can also adopt who their collective member would be. Number eight, we then will have to have staff, me, Chris, somebody will have to reach out to the Georgia House of Representatives and Senate folks who have all or portion of their district within Milton and get their nominees. And again, it's not going to be hurried because we'll be able to tell, look, there's not going to be any assembly until at the earliest January 15th. We've got 45 days. And in fact, we can reach out to them beforehand, just like we're going to do to you, and try to get, go ahead and get them thinking about that. I put this in there, Chris has never seen it, and number nine, so let's see if he's upset or not about it. But I did want to make him an ex officio member of this, which means basically non-voting, but certainly there. I think that would be wise because inevitably, they're going to have questions about why this is hard to resolve, why this isn't working, what can we do to make it better? And I think your city manager would be an invaluable resource to be at those meetings. I hate to sound like this up for another meeting, but it's something y'all may want to think about him doing to help this commission get its job done. They have to make their review of recommendations in paragraph 10 by six months after they're created, so I would ahead and plug that date in, June 5th, 2012. And number 11, I gave them the authority. They don't have to use me, but if they'd like to use me to help get them assembled, maybe comply with the old meetings, that, things of that nature, I'll be available any...
When's the first regular meeting in January?
Oh, well, I wasn't sure because I think it would ordinarily fall on January 2nd. I think that's right, so I wasn't sure if that would be postponed because of the holiday.
It appears that the work session is the first meeting in January. And you say that a final list may be approved by the city council at its first regular meeting in January.
Yes, that's what I was thinking. So whatever date that is, I'm just wasn't sure.
Usually, we have a regular meeting, then work session, then a regular meeting.
Well, the work session I was contemplating when we discussed this was the December work session. And then I was thinking that would be the segue that included this in January.
December 12 is the work session in December.
Just to throw it out, and Ken, you may have some suggestions, and also council, my appointment's very easy, but when you've got six people that might have six very qualified people to make a decision on one, what's the best scenario for that? Should maybe have one council member kind of take everybody's...
Should maybe have one council member kind of take everybody's ideas, or is it some, you know, a public work session, hammer out, you know, different names, or, you know, what's your suggestion?
Right, that's a great question, yeah.
It's not something that could all meet behind closed doors and talk about, so it'd have to be a...
I will say this, I will say that the Charter anticipates that this is going to be something, looking at a fairly complex document, obviously, it's your enabling legislation. So I think the skill set you're going to be looking for is someone, it's more than just a passing interest. I mean, this is something that someone has to really be wedded to, because, and they need to be really involved and have an understanding of Milton government, quite frankly. I don't mean to be throwing out further log jams, but I'm just saying, it's, I can't help but think that the person that's going to fit this position is going to be fairly obvious to all of us when we hear their name. It's going to be someone that really knows what is going on in a very meaningful way, and it's not obviously a member of his council. But I hope you're not.
Yeah, I mean, I'm thinking if, and let's say maybe the mayor pro temp spearheaded and just, you know, talk individually to council members and everybody, suggest someone, and then maybe look and say, "Wait, three people have suggested this person," or whatever, and then kind of go back to, or you may have to get everybody to recommend a couple of people, and see who keeps coming up the most, and then talk to everybody.
I think I'd start that pretty quick.
Yeah.
And I would certainly be in favor of that. I guess the statement I need to make, though, is, I guess, as I'm reading the Charter, I don't read this that the commission has to exclude the mayor or city council members. Where is it that you're reading that?
That it can't be you all?
Yeah.
I don't think it expressly says that. I mean, the paragraph says what it says. I think that that is implicit to me by the fact that it's asking for a separate Charter Commission at all, and that it identifies who has to be on it. And the members of, it says, "Members of the Charter Commission shall be appointed as follows," that it sets forth the methodology. I don't know, I mean, it seems to me that if the council itself was supposed to be part of the commission, seems like that would have been included. That's the best I've got.
Okay.
That's the best I've got.
And then the other question I had is, item number seven. I understand six, with the mayor appointing an individual, but then number seven is the city council. Is that inclusive of the mayor or excluding the mayor?
That's a great question, and the way I'm reading that is that would be inclusive, because the mayor is on the council, so I think he would almost get, he gets his own selection and a vote on your own.
Julie?
I was just going to say, who will be reaching out to our state representative? And now, we're going to have more than one, so because of Jan and...
The redistricting will go into place before this is called for, so the redistricting does not affect this. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, no, that was my question, is because of the redistricting, the whole way or partially...
I'm thinking staff could probably reach out to them.
I've reached out to Representative Jones, I've reached out to Senator Albers.
Okay.
I've also reached out to other, the biggest, and I haven't found the brilliant map yet to rely upon, to see if there are anybody else that, if anybody else has anything, it's going to be like one or two addresses.
David Shaffer has a lot of our...
And I can't get...
Yes, he does.
No, then I shouldn't...
He has more actually than Albers right now.
And I shouldn't say that I couldn't get any of them to tell me who else might be their counterpart in Milton, but I just guess I just said that.
But I know that with Chip Rogers in Cherokee, because he was going to obviously take over, but to your point, the dates include that. But what I was going to suggest is that, sooner or later, we can get a sense of who they are contemplating appointing. It'll help us, the mayor pro temp, so that we don't end up with redundant names, because there could be some people that...
Kind of rely upon your experience here collectively as well, just as somebody bounced a question off of, can you think of anybody else representative-wise, just because you happen to know there's a little glitch in the thing, or there's something over off of King Road, or do you know of any?
At the time, there were only, there were two senators, and Jan was the only, currently is the only one.
Do you know if that's the way it exists today?
It's the way it exists today.
And Albers replaced...
It will not be the way it exists.
Correct.
So we're looking at three, and then we're looking at two, so we're going to have five, which is actually sort of nice, if that's the way it turns out. So we'll...
And again, even though that's going to go in place, or even that the shift of the district lines goes in place after we form the commission, there's not a need to include a representative from the...
No, we can't, given the details of this, and when it has to be created, I think we have to rely on the map.
And when does that redistricting go into effect?
Next June.
Okay.
Chair, did you have another question?
I would like to, in number nine, if we're going to clean this up, just so you see it, since you put me under the bus there, I think, in order for the purposes of this resolution, I would like to, I don't have a problem with the city manager being an ex officio on here. I don't know that we necessarily need to say a name, because it's more than just the position we're going to have.
I was assuming longevity was implied.
You were, but, you know, I show up every day wondering about that myself, so. Two I would like to have...
There's no foreshadowing in that.
He has the same, and he needed, he agreed to ask, so he made it.
Chris is probably technically right.
But technically, I'm just not used to names being called out. It's more the position that's important. But I would also like to have a, partly because as this process moves, there's going to need to be somebody that can act as a scribe. I would like there to be somebody from your office representing there, because this is different than just creative writing, to the extent that changes are recommended. I mean, these are, this is language that's going to need to be crafted in the right way, so.
Will it be crafted by us, or will they have legislators take care of crafting it down at the...
Well, I believe we've got to give them as close to the document that we believe of what we want as possible, because anytime there's room for interpretation, it can always be interpreted wrong.
Yeah, I agree with Chris.
Or differently.
We'll make a recommendation we made, but it'll go to the Office of Legislative Council for the General Assembly.
So there would be seven positions.
Five voting, two non-voting.
Five voting, yeah.
Okay.
You have a question?
One last thing I want to bring up, just so that you, just so that you're aware of what's going on. Obviously, we and Johns Creek have to do this at the same time. I'm still exploring, and once we start to put this group together, I'm still exploring what I think can actually get a group of people to a finish line, to deal with tough issues, and tough issues need to be dealt with, and how we get that done in six months. Johns Creek is elected to go down the route of having their group professionally facilitate it, and I don't know that we necessarily need to do that, although I'm exploring...
For the city, for the commission?
For their Charter Commission. And, you know, I've talked a lot with John, I don't want you to hear that and go, "Gosh, they're doing something totally different than we are. Are we doing it wrong?" I'm not exactly sure yet. I think that with a group as manageable as five, that we likely could facilitate our own. Maybe there's other driving factors over there, I don't know, but if you see the fact that the city has had this, is going down the professional facilitator route to get to an end result, just know that I haven't ruled it out, but I don't, I'm not exactly sure where we are at this point. I'm not coming tonight to tell you that I think we need to have it facilitated, but let me just continue to explore that.
And I assume their professional facilitator is paid?
Pretty well.
I would prefer us to try to go down the route without having to pay a professional facilitator.
Their politics are a little different than mine.
And I have a quick question, as it relates to that, and especially of Ken, Ken, if you or somebody from your office, I mean, to me, you're going to be obviously getting paid to have representation there, maybe Ken's office could help to facilitate that from a local perspective if necessary.
Thinking Tom Monbelli.
Chris is a great facilitator, I don't know if there'd be a conflict of interest in him facilitating.
Between Chris and the attorney, if you're acting as ex officio, and with Karen, I don't know why we would want to spend any more money.
Fair enough, I just don't want you all to see that, you know, all of a sudden, something pop up on their council again.
It's okay that we do things differently than Johns Creek.
I agree with you.
We are our own city.
It's, you know...
Unique is good.
I agree.
Milton's a good place.
Alright.
Alright, y'all, that's what we had tonight.